Special meeting of Planning Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, can you tell everyone how you will be running this virtual only Zoom meeting tonight?
Um, well, the first agenda items can be slightly different. I'll let Pete go into the details, but we're on a regular Zoom. Everyone's video is shut off if you're not a member of the commission. And if you want to speak, please use the razor hand icon and we will call on you in orderly fashion.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lynn. Okay, let's take a roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. John, Chris.
Present.
Kristen Nielsen.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Tascornia.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Okay, great. Item number one, we're in a regular meeting for both items tonight. Item number one, docket number LND CV nineteen dash six one two zero nine four seven dash S. David Marquitos at Alver versus zoning board of appeals of the town of New Canaan at Al, pursuant to the memorandum of decision from the Superior Court Judiciary District of Hartford dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. In accordance with the judge's decision, the matter is to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its consideration in accordance with the judge's decision. Before we get going, I would like to make a statement. As you know, Mr. Markodas, Marquitos, Miss Sujans, by cherry picking a few emails from years ago out of over more than thirteen hundred concerning Grace have alleged that I am biased in matters related to Grace Farms. This past spring, Attorney Bloom advised me recusal would not be a bad idea solely to avoid another point of litigation by Marquitos and Sujans, and not due to any appearance of bias. I agree. In retrospect, from a right thing to do perspective, it was the wrong decision. That said, so not to complicate matters at this juncture, I will continue to recuse myself. As always, like me, I know you commissioners will review and decide on this matter in a fair and unbiased fashion. So once again, I thank you again, and turn the meeting over to Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, John. Okay, so the the issue, I think all the members of the commission have received a copy of Judge Berger's decision, which we were not as the P and Z, we were not a party to the case. It was the ZBA and Marquitos. And it dealt with the entry house at the entry of the Grace Farms properties, where Grace Farms was converting some of the living space, a garage area to office space in order to accommodate more employees that were going to be involved in the administration and security for Grace Farms. The the judge was looking for the commission for us to provide additional information on how the conditions of the existing special permit, that that is the ninth, the twenty seventeen special permit, how those conditions would apply to the matter before the judge, which was the modifications to the entry house, the which they called the operations center. So that's what we've been asked by ZBA to give ZBA some clarification that they can then pass back on to Judge Berger. So that's our assignment this evening. Now, not all of us, obviously, were members of the commission at the time of the special permit in question. I was, and I think a couple of others, I'm not really sure just how many, but a few of the others were. The court wants the commission to interpret and define the condition as it might apply to the work in question in this in the litigation. So I I thought that what what I would do is, since I was on the commission at the time of that special permit, that I can express my thoughts, but that's just one commissioner. But eventually, it's going to be a decision of the commission. But for particularly perhaps for the benefit of some of the commissioners who were not on the commission at the time, maybe some of my understandings would be helpful. You all have copies of the special permit of twenty seventeen. That application for that special permit really was focused on and dealt with a request by Grace Farms to increase the principal uses that Grace Farms was allowed to to use. At the time, there was only one principal use, which was a religious as a religious institution. Grace Farms requested the two additional principal uses, which include or which consisted of a philanthropic and elocentary institutions and clubs and organizations, so that there would be three principal uses. We had a lot of discussion on on the issue, whether you could have more principal uses or not. Eventually, we did agree that they could have three principal uses. And that is really the heart of that special permit. But as you all know, the special permit includes one hundred condition. And at the time, when we agreed to provide the total of three principal uses, the commission felt it important to provide a lot of conditions which, for the main part, were to protect the neighbors. And I think anyone who reads through those conditions will quickly realize that most of the conditions were imposed upon Grace Farms to restrict them in a number of different ways. And one of those conditions, which is the appears to be the principal condition, that's the issue in the litigation, where we have now by from ZBA been asked to provide our interpretation, so to speak, of that condition and how that condition would apply to the facts that were and are before the Superior Court, dealing with the operations center. And that condition is number six, which is a short condition. It says, there shall be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use unless specifically authorized herein. As I understand it, and I I guess I'm going to ask Pete for his approval or comment. As I understand it, Pete, what we're doing tonight, it's not a public hearing. No, no one is from the public is permitted to give their views. But it's it's a hearing that we can accept and listen to perhaps comments from the parties, basically, meaning the the neighbor who is the part, the plaintiff in the litigation and the Grace Farm ZB Grace Grace Farms. And I don't think ZBA is going to participate. But is that correct? So that we can permit, and I guess we should listen to comments, perhaps from the attorneys of Grace Farms and the neighbors. Now, we have received and all the commissioners have a copy of letters from the lawyers, both from Grace Farms attorneys and the neighbor, Marquitos attorney, which are, you know, well-written arguments explaining their views on this issue of principally defining condition number six and how it might apply, if it applies, to the work on the operations center. So if if that's the case, Pete, should we now hear if the parties wish to make any comment? Perhaps I should see if there's anyone that would like to make a comment at this time. Otherwise, I will proceed with sort of my understanding at the time of in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, we, um, thank you, Dick. It's Pete Gelderman. We had discussed absolutely allowing attorneys for the parties, meaning Marquitos and Grace to make comments. We talked about keeping those comments relatively or as brief as possible to make their points. We're not rehearing the arguments that the ZBA heard. This is not what this is about. This is about the court asking the commission to tell the ZBA. This your decision will go back to the ZBA and then ultimately the ZBA will determine if their prior decision is consistent with what you decide, and then that will be reported to the court. So that's why it's not a public hearing and but it's I think it's appropriate to allow other counsel to make comments to the commission to the extent they're relevant. There are actually two permits that we're kind of talking about tonight, even though the appeal that was taken and was remanded back to the ZBA for input by this commission related to the operations center. There was also a zoning permit that was issued for the West Barn for some work inside that as well. And and the parties have basically agreed that the the concepts between the two are the same. So that if the commission decides that the renovations in the operations center were within the scope of the permit and were not an unlawful or or did not exceed the commission's definition of intensification, then that finding is going to apply to the West Barn as well. So I am not taking an advocacy position to the commission here. It's the commission's decision. The the question really, as Dick, I think, stated fairly clearly, is is really whether the work associated with those two permits constitutes an intensification of use and therefore should have, a zoning permit should not have been issued. And at the very least, the applicant Grace Farm should have then gone back to the commission for a modification of those of the special permit to permit that activity. Or whether the zoning enforcement officer in this case, it wasn't Lynn, it predated Lynn, but Keisha Fink issued the zoning permit, you know, without coming back to the commission. So that's really the the issue for the commission tonight. It's determining and interpreting its own resolution and its own condition. So while other attorneys may have a position, it's it's your interpretation that is critical here is what the court is looking for is how does the commission view primarily the word intensification in condition number six? Do these permits result in an intensification?
Well, I think we have the views of both of the attorneys in their correspondence to the commission. Now, I don't know if they wish to I hope it's not just a restatement since we have read those letters and we know what they've said.
Mr. Chairman Ward, this is Amy Sujans. I would like to be heard for just a couple of minutes on a few points that have been raised in the Robinson and Cole letter before Grace Farms and just to keep a couple of key factual points that I'd like to make.
Okay, please proceed.
Um, will my video be on or am I staying off camera? There we go.
There, okay, I can now see you. Okay, Attorney Sujan.
Great, thank you. For the record, my name is Amy Sujan, attorney at Herbert Sagrin Sossberg and Off with offices in Milford, here representing David Marquitos and Jennifer Home. As I just said, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to raise a couple of key factual points, one of which, and the first one relates to frankly, what I think we are not here for. There were some representations in the August twenty seventh correspondence to you suggesting that you should take this opportunity to set the record straight with respect to condition six with respect to the entire special permit and implications that you should be somehow taking away rights or arguments that my clients have in issuing this interpretation. That is not what the court has directed in its decision. We are here on two frankly, very limited issues with respect to the direct remand on the operations center in regard to condition six, and then obviously by agreement, the discussion about the West Barn for for that option. If you were intending to have a broader discussion about how condition six applies to the overall special permit or with respect to how, excuse me, applies to other buildings or other potential ramifications, I do think that needs to happen in a public hearing where all members of the public can speak, whether it's us or frankly, other neighbors who have been interested in this process and and weighed in. So I do think that tonight is a much more limited focus than what was suggested in that correspondence. And then just to highlight a few facts that I think are important for the members of the commission, particularly for those of you who were not members of the commission when this was originally approved back in two thousand, went through the public hearing process in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. Frankly, this is what was happening then is happening all over again with, in our opinion, Grace Farms exceeding the terms of the special permit as seen in these operations operations center and the West Barn. And then back then, this commission directed them to come back and amend the process, amend the permit and go through the process. And it's the same thing that we we see happening here. I think in order to make a determination of intensity under condition six, and that is in fact, our argument that these are intensifications of use under in violation of that condition. It requires you to look at a before and after, frankly, the before being what was going on in two thousand seventeen and what was represented to you in the application process, in the application materials, and what was incorporated into the special permit, whether it be condition six and then more broadly, a number of the other conditions. Most importantly, I think with respect to the operations center, Grace Farms represented that in March, in its March two thousand seventeen application, that there would be five employees in the operations center. The correspondence you received last month indicated that there were fourteen employees pre-pandemic, nearly triple the number that were represented, certainly in our opinion, an intensification of use. And the permits that were granted, as we noted in our materials, would allow up to twenty-three employees, certainly well above what was allowed and anticipated in conjunction with the issuance of the special permit. The foundation has accused us in its various correspondence of trying to require them to come back for every little change to the site plan, every little change to the special permit, et cetera. Frankly, I think there are certain circumstances that are large and truly material applications, as you saw with Putnam Hill, that no question would require an amendment to the special permit. I think where we are right now is the type of use, as we noted, where something rising to the level of requiring zoning permits and building permits, certificates of occupancy, structural changes to the building certainly fall into the category of intensification. This is not simply Grace Farms hiring a new employee and fitting a desk in existing space. This has changed the nature of their operation. It has allowed them, as I said, to intensify in the operations center and the employee change is the important, important element there. I think when you go back through the rest of those materials, a number of which we highlighted, I direct you in particular to the Grace Farms representation PDF has a number of the things from the application about what they anticipated, what they told you, and frankly, what you believed they would do. Frankly, what my clients believed they would follow in choosing not to appeal that special permit. They they, as Chairman Ward noted, thought that a hundred conditions of approval, if abided by, would give them adequate protection. But as as we've seen over the last few years, that has turned out to not be the case. And I think when you look at the in particular, their representations in the June two thousand seventeen letter in their closing thoughts to this commission, they make representation after representation that there would not be any expansion or intensification of use. That is highlighted in the plan of metrics memo, and I would also direct you back to the portions of the transcript from your deliberations where there is some very relevant discussion about this condition and about the the nature of the things that went on. Um, I think the other thing to remind the commission members who were not here for the original application process was that, and it's also included in the record, Grace Farms did come back and try to amend a number of these conditions, specifically number, condition number thirty, as it related to the operations center. They thought that the commission had gotten a number of things wrong and tried to make clarifications. They chose to withdraw that application and so are left with the condition as written. And frankly, condition thirty does not allow the type of use that they have done without this commission's approval. As we noted, they can't simply ignore the language of the condition and neither can you in evaluating whether or not there was an intensification of use. So I would strongly encourage you to go back and read the representations about the operations center that were made throughout that process. And then with respect to the West Barn, I think the other item there is that the understanding was that at that point in the the process, the plans were the same as they had been a number of years before that, frankly, going back to two thousand twelve, where the plans for the West Barn. And Grace has converted approximately eight hundred square feet of unconditioned and unfinished space into additional offices. And again, like the operations center, this is not a situation where they're taking space and adding another desk or utilizing the space that they have. They have taken on space and utilized it and required zoning permits and building permits that were reflected in three new offices, an open floor plan kitchenette, excuse me, kitchenette was in the operations center, but can basically convert that West Barn space into more office space and do again, exactly what they told you they would not do with with respect to growth, intensification, and the decision-making process that went into frankly prohibiting outright any intensification of the uses on the site. The three uses on the site are the ones that are occurring in each of these buildings, whether Grace tries to characterize it as the elocentary use, whether it applies as the club and organization, however it is, these types of significant changes to the operations, excuse me, to the operations center and the West Barn are frankly inconsistent with the idea that there cannot be any intensification. As as Attorney Gelderman will tell you, intensification has a legal meaning and you can the fact that that word was chosen does have legal effect. I think it prohibits you in in the normal course, it would prohibit more of the same as you've written it. So the fact that this condition was worded as no intensification means no more of the same. So they were limited to the the buildings, the layouts, et cetera, as they were approved at the time. And if they wanted to do anything else that would rise, as I said again, as that would rise to the level of this permit or requiring these permits, it required them to come back to this commission. It would depend on the nature of what they were proposing, as as we talked about with eighty-two Putnam Hill, that obviously required an amendment to the special permit. But certainly, at minimum, this should have come back to the commission in an administrative capacity, potentially as an amendment to the special permit. But absolutely, there should have been a review by this commission before any of those permits were issued. So with respect to that, I think that, again, when you go back and read through the items, and I would again encourage you to look back at the the representations that were made by Grace Farms, and also we we provided things frankly, from the record. So it's it's item number fifty-three I, which talks about the operations center and fifty-three N, which is the plan of metrics memo, I think those and were two thousand seventeen deliberations are frankly, the documents that would give you the best guidance as to you know, as I described at the beginning, the before and after as to what has gone on here. So with that, I think my request of the commission is to find that with respect to the West Barn and operations center, that this is an intensification of use, and I would encourage you to direct the ZBA to revoke the zoning permits and building permits as we've, as we have requested of them. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them or direct you to any of the other materials.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Sujan. Perhaps Grace Farms counsel would like
Thank you. Brian Smith Robinson and Co. representing Grace Farms Foundation. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm going to start, I'm not sure where to start with the the presentation by counsel for Marquitos and Home, except I think we we agree that once you look at the entire picture here in terms of
Brian, hold on, Brian, Brian, hold on one second. Whoever is Arnold's iPhone needs to mute. Thank you. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah, maybe I'll I'll start over a little bit. So I think one of the things that we should look at is condition number six, which is intensification of use, is actually a fairly straightforward condition. And the arguments you've heard counsel just make were the same arguments that were made before the zoning board of appeals about the facts. But one of the things that is sort of a theme running through the 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 neighbors alleged facts, which are not found by the zoning board of appeals, and we're not here trying to convince this commission of facts, which has set the stage for whether there's an intensification of use. If you would look at condition number six, she then referred to condition number thirty. I think I'm going to read that into the record for everyone's benefit because it's very short, which is about accessory uses. And the former dwelling on the site located the main entrance is hereby approved to house the operations center for security and other administration, administrative operations for the property and an accessory residential apartment for an employee, employee or guest and residence of the foundation. The building shall not otherwise be rented for dwelling or commercial purposes. And in counsel Sujan's letter of August thirtieth, she makes the claim several times without any basis in fact, that what Grace Farms did in is construction activities at the operations center was to create offices for commercial purposes. That is absolutely not true. Where the guest residence could have been, we did convert to office space and the head of security, its administration of security sits in the office where that would be. That is not a commercial use. That is what that's that's where we talk about an intensive That is what, that's, that's where we talk about an intensification of use. And, and her standard or her client's standard for what an intensification of use would be appears to be, if you change an interior wall, you put in an electrical socket, you need a building or zoning permit for any purpose. That is somehow a change that requires an applicant, including Grace Farms, to come back before you. And that's not the standard that should be applied in this instance. There are one hundred conditions here, and I think that this commission worked very hard with Grace Farms in order to arrive at those conditions to make it work in a, in a uh, a meaningful and, and productive manner. And I would turn the commission's attention to uh condition number ninety-eight, which uh is where it says the PZC reserves the right to have the zoning official or a third party paid for by Grace Farms Foundation conduct a review and or inspection of the operations at the property at any time and for any reason. The property ordering consent to such inspections, special permit. That's a remarkable condition. And that's one that has been employed a number of times uh because of the, the neighbors have complained over twenty times and where the zoning enforcement officer has found to no basis whatsoever to uh oh say that there's improper uh activity going on in which the, the zoning enforcement already has a right to do. Uh, if they don't want to enforce something because they don't find anything, that's what they do. Here, that this was much more of an application for a zoning permit and a building permit. We had to explain the use that was going to be made. And it was a change to, to allow offices in the same space. There was no expansion of the footprint. There is no uh change in the use at all, nor was there any uh increase in the parking or anything such as that that would require an intensification. So the, the, the red herrings that are being thrown around here are not things that, that are uh productive. Uh, they, they, they hamper the, the, the issues. I think where we, where we, and we, and again, where we had made representations that, that were taken out of context by um Attorney Sutin's and our clients is to say that, you know, we made no representations that we would expand anything. And yet we specifically said we would be coming back for an expansion or a change in use for eighty-two putting hill, which this commission now has taken. And, and you know, we threw a very long and deliberative process to come up with a new set of conditions for tho- those portions that the commission approved. And in fact, rejected some of the ones that Grace Farms was seeking. And that's fine. And Grace Farms has accepted those new conditions and approvals, has not appealed. Our neighbors have appealed that those sets of conditions. So the, the uh uh issues are really, I, I don't want to rehash the whole uh situation here, you know, but because that's, that's not what we're here for. But the, 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 what we are here for is to say, yes, condition six is a condition where you cannot intensify your use, but, but the facts which the ZBA found and, and not the ones that were alleged I, I don't support that this is an intensification of use. It's simply uh, uh you know, a, a changing the, you know, relocating various portions within the structure to allow us to, to uh, you know, and ha- you know, enhance the ability to provide administrative and security services. And the West Barn is very similar. It was to allow uh an, an employee for a use that's permitted to sit in that location as opposed to somewhere else, but it's not an intensification of the use overall where we had to get new parking or other uh aspects of the, of the uses that, that we're allowed to do. So I, I, I think that, you know, the commission, uh and I was not present for, for in two thousand seventeen as well, but you know, I, I've consulted with our client and, and we, we have uh done everything we can to uh work with the commission and, and work through these permits and approvals and, and operate in a uh sound manner and do the best we can to promote uh the, the the programs that Grace Farms have in a respectful fashion. And uh the, we, what we are asking also is that, that that you clarify exactly what you mean with, for intensification of use, so there, there's no doubt at anyone's part. I don't think it's appropriate for Attorney Sutin to ask you to ask the ZBA to revoke a permit. That's not even what you're here for tonight either. I'm simply asking you to do what the judge had asked all of us to come and, and seek from you, which is a, a clarification of what intensification of use and uh means in condition six. And what we respectfully submit is what we had done at the operations center of the West Barn does not rise to a level of an intensification of use. So thank you very much, and uh we'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Smith. I think now for the benefit of particularly of those commissioners who were not present in two thousand seventeen, uh I, I will uh share uh my view of what we as a commission in two thousand seventeen were trying to do and what that special permit, I think, uh does. As I, as I said previously, the focus of this special permit really dealt with the uh three uses that the Grace Farms was requesting. Uh, but they were adding two uses to the, the existing religious institution use. And the conditions, and well, if you read the findings, you'll see that that's exactly what the commission was considering and what the commission found, that those three uses, the commission approved and felt that they were uh uh in accordance with the zoning regulations uh at the time. The conditions then implement and expand on the findings. And the commission was trying to impose restrictions on Grace Farms with respect to the approved uses. And condition six, there should be no material change of the approved user intensification of any use unless specifically authorized herein. My understanding at the time was condition six related to the three uses that we were at that time approving after lengthy discussions. Therefore, when I apply six to the facts that were before the ZBA and that relate to the uh operations center and West Barn, and I'll sort of treat them the same as uh I think the, both counsel have mentioned. Clearly, the conversion of space within the operations center and uh West Barn, for that matter, was not a change of the use, those three uses that we approved. So therefore, I'll sort of move on to intensification. Well, I don't see, and I don't believe at the time uh we were considering a conversion within a building to be an intensification of one of the three principal uses. The fact that Grace Farms has converted uh living space or uh garage space, I guess it was garage space and storage space perhaps for uh West Barn into office space. Frankly, I, as one commissioner, don't see that as an intensification of religious institution, iliumanos, elmo scenario institutions or clubs or organizations. I just don't see that they, they really relate. Furthermore, when you look at uh condition thirty, which deals with the operations center and was a specific approval, which uh Attorney Smith did read it right into the uh record. But we approved to house the operations center for security and other administrative operations. So we were approving specifically the, that entry house, which was, I guess, a former residence to be used for operations uh as an operations center for security and administrative operations. That's a pretty broad term. And the fact that we imposed one hundred conditions, clearly Grace Farms was, was going to have to spend a lot of time to fulfill their obligations under these conditions. Uh, and it was going to require supervision, administration and security. So they were going to have to have more employees. They were going to have to have office space. I think we were I feel we actually imposed upon Grace Farms to develop more office space in order to fulfill, to have the staff that could fulfill the operations. They didn't expand the footprint of either the operations center or the West Barn. That's been discussed, and I think everyone agrees to that. So it was just a matter of converting existing spaces into office space, which they would need to house the staff and employees that would have to be sure that Grace Farms was carrying out the obligations that we imposed upon. So that's, that was my understanding at the time. It's my understanding as to what uh condition number six, it, it relates to the three principal uses and I, I would not agree that intensification in condition six re- refers to any of the other ancillary uses that may have or may exist, whether it's their I don't know, feeding operations, their kitchen operations, et cetera. But clearly these uh uh spa- the space, the changing it to uh office space, I don't think uh is an intensification within my understanding of uh condition six. Now, I don't know whether some of the other commissioners who were present at the time share that view, have a different view. I can only speak for myself.
This is Krista Nielsen. I was gonna, if it's okay. Do you want to hear from other commissioners that were on the commission at the time now or no?
Sure, because uh I think that at the end of the day, uh we're not going to do it tonight. But uh the, the court is looking for an interpretation or an understanding from the commission as a whole, not the understanding of any single commission. I think they make that fairly clear. So at the end of the day, we're going to have to have a, an understanding within the commission as to what that uh condition six, how, how it should be interpreted under the facts that are, were before the ZBA. And then there'll be a, there'll be a, we'll have a resolution and have our, our usual process, but I, I think we'll wait. Uh, we'll, we'll do that and the uh appropriate uh uh resolution would be drafted after we've had the, our discussion that we'll undertake now. Okay, Krista, Krista. Go ahead, Krista. You have anything else you want to say?
Yeah, so I, I wanted to um concur with your interpretation of um condition number six. I was fairly new at the time that we heard this application, so I didn't have a lot to compare it to. But my interpretation was that um, you know, intensification of use, that we had basically limited the activity on the site through the activity chart that we provided in the special permit and the maximum parking of two hundred and twenty-six spaces. Um, you know, at no point do I read through those conditions and see that we were counting the number of employees that we were, thought Grace Farms was going to have and saying that if they intensified the number of employees, they had to come back to us. Um, I mean, basically, in my opinion, that is capped by the parking onsite. So if they want to have an event with, you know, two hundred and two hundred people and they want to have twenty-six employees and that's all the parking onsite, then that was, you know, how we were controlling the intensity of the use on the site in terms of number of people, whether employees, whether um they were visitors to the site. Um, so I would also agree that I don't think that adding additional office space to do the same type of work that was already approved under this permit is an intensification of the use. And as Mr. Ward indicated, I think it is actually perfectly acceptable because we put a lot of administrative burden on Grace Farms through this special permit. And it would seem that they would need to have the staff to implement that.
All right. Well, I see Kent. I don't know. John, I'll, I'll get you next, but okay, I saw Kent stand there. Okay, Kent.
Thank you, Dick. Um, I was on the commission and um at that time. And um the um parking was, was really the key to controlling the um, the growth and, you know, preventing that. Um, we, we really transferred parking spaces uh to, to Putin Hill uh for the operations center from the main parking area. And it was understood and the condition said that the parking spaces would, would be reduced in that area. So uh, you know, my logic or my understanding at the time was that this would be our method for uh eliminating any kind of intensification of the use. Um, however, uh giving a little more thought to that, um, we did not articulate uh visitor parking and um nor did we uh talk about um an increase in the amount of employees. Um, so I'm, I'm agreeing with um uh what uh Mr. Ward is saying and um Krista. And um, but um, I'm just a little you know, it's more of a technicality. Um, I, I think we should have probably said a little more in detail as far as employee counts and um uh to avoid um you know, you know, this uh interpretation of, of, of what is intensification. But um generally speaking, I agree with um what's been said.
Yeah, John, uh, Chris. John, you're
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would only concur that the um uh parking limit was a key, though not the only uh limit uh that's commissioned decided to uh impose on the uh, on the applicant Grace Farms in order to um, um, it's called uh li- limit activities of various sorts. Uh, since number of people moving in and out or on, onsite is uh somewhat of, somewhat of a function of parking. That's one way to do it, and there's one important way this commission uh decided to uh, to limit intensification of overall activities. You know, the, the activities that are uh been discussed have a certain amount of, of ebb and flow, such as how many people you need to uh provide appropriate security. For example, security technology may indicate that you don't need as many people or maybe because of some event you need more people, they will ebb and flow. And I think, I think I, I always thought in my mind that there's a certain amount of ebb and flow in this. And while, you know, the, at, at some point, um, you know, you run to the end of your chain. I, I don't really see that here uh as, as far as uh an, an intensification. Um, you know, uh, to talk about um uh interior renovations, you know, how many of us have had interior renovations at our home or another building we know of? And you know, we're taking down this wall because we want our kitchen bigger or something else bigger. We're not changing the footprint or the outside uh envelope. We're just changing things in the inside. Is that really an intensification? I difficulty wrapping my mind around that. That said, um, you know, at some point you have to call something's intensification. Um, so for example, there is a, an ecclesiastical society there at Grace Church. Typically, they have uh religious services of various sorts and counseling. Okay, fair enough. And uh Sunday school, I, I get that too. You know, um, we have something similar with another uh ecclesiastical society in town, Saint Elohis Church. Now, Elohis Church also has a actual school, school. I would say, you know, and that is often seen as a, an extension of one's ministry. I get that too. I would say, you know, that is often seen as an extension of one's ministry. I get that too. If Grace Church were to decide to establish a school, a true school on the property, I would see that as something they would need to ask this commission about as an intensification. I don't hear that happening here, but that's the sort of thing I would probably look, ask, and son, or at least think about if such an application would be made. Now, no application has been made, and I'm not opining how I would view such a thing, but it would certainly be, I think, an issue for discussion. So I think the issues here, at least in my mind, given what I've heard, do not really cross the line of an intensification of use, particularly without changing the outside envelope and footprints of the various buildings, which I think probably would be. So that's my thoughts at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, I see James has his hand up.
Yeah, hi, James Bash. I have a question for Brian Smith. So my understanding is that the Justice Initiative, if I'm right, it's called Unchained, that the Justice Initiative is now housed in the operations center. And we have in condition thirty, the operations should be used for security and other administrative operations. How is the Justice Initiative fall under the umbrella of security and other administrative operations?
I don't have my video up. I'm trying to get that done, but I can answer the question. The, well, first of all, the the activities of the Justice Initiative are being conducted at the operations center are the administration of the Justice Initiative. It's not the programming. It's not any, you know, anything that the Justice Initiative were to do with programmatically does not occur in the operations center. It's simply another administrative function. We have five different, you know, different initiatives. They all needed to be administered, and that's what, those are the people who are administering the Justice Initiative. That's where they happen to sit. And some of them have, oh, I see, I can, here I am. And they serve, they have other hats as well administratively, but they do, they do provide administration for the Justice Initiative. And that is, and by the way, I think you mentioned the word unchain. That is not, that was never located there. That entity was ran and was dissolved. It never functioned in that location whatsoever. It was, you know, it co-sponsored some events at one point in time, but they were run through Grace Farms, not through Unchained, which was a different location, you know, not even on the site. And that's not, it's not the same as the Justice Initiative and Unchained are two different things entirely.
Did the Justice Initiative start before or after the special permit with the hundred conditions?
It was one of the five, oops, it was one of the five initiatives, I think, that were articulated at the time.
And then, just in response to the question on traffic being one of the gating factors for intensification of use, my understanding is that, at least in the past, there's been a shuttle bus service to bring people to Grace Farms. Is that the case?
There are shuttles, but I'm not as familiar as others, so I would have to actually consult with them to give you a precise answer.
So.
I'm sorry.
I said Lynn probably is more familiar with that.
Yes, I think she may be than I am, so.
If there is the possibility of having shuttle bus services to increase the amount of activity on the site, and just another way to potentially have intensification of use that I think is above and beyond what was intended in the special permit. And, you know, one of the limitations that Commissioner Turner mentioned, which is, you know, we're going to principally use these two hundred and twenty-six or whatever it is, parking spaces to limit use. A shuttle bus service undermines that, if that's really truly our intent. And at what point do you call this one call a threshold on the number of shuttle buses that can come in? How big are the shuttle buses? Do they have thirty or forty people? And I think those sorts of questions need to be asked if we're going to use parking spaces as our, as one of our bottlenecks or constraints.
Well, let me just add a comment there, James. In addition to the parking space limitation, there is an activity chart which imposes headcount maximums on a variety of different types of activities with an overall maximum cap that, and I'll even read it, it says, "No single event or combination of events shall exceed twelve hundred people onsite at any time unless expressly approved by the P and Z." So there are other constraints that we as a commission did impose upon Grace Farms in order to try to keep intensity down. I mean, that's really the purpose of many of these conditions is to control the intensity and to create a balance with the neighbors and, you know, some protection for the neighbors. That's.
No, so I appreciate that, Commissioner Ward, but, you know, there is also within that activity chart, there's frequency as well. So that if there is under two hundred people, I believe it's, you know, that's one of the activity levels under two hundred, the frequency is, there is no cap on the frequency. So I think of that chart both in the context of the amount of people onsite and the frequency under which, if you're under two hundred, you can have that amount of people onsite, which does not have a limit.
True.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, or I would just, may I add one comment to that? Thank you. I would simply note that, of course, one of the reasons that people use shuttle buses, and when you have an overall headcount, is to reduce the impact of having numerous vehicles onsite instead, because a shuttle bus will reduce the number of other vehicles that are required to bring people back and forth. That's one thing. And then the other is that we spend, there is a significant staff time that is spent to count the number of people at any one time at Grace Farms. And that's one of the reasons I think you've alluded to that staffing would have to increase in order to meet these conditions, and that's exactly what has happened. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to ask Commissioner Radman, who has his hand up, because I know he was present in 2017 because he had a lot to say when we were discussing principal uses, as I recall, Dan, you were rather vocal on the issue.
Yeah, I was. I mean, I had specific concerns as to the definition of principal uses on the property, the various foundations and organizations that Grace Farms has found a home for on the property. But in this particular case, with regard to the Puton Hill House, I'm in the same park as the rest of you in terms, or most of the rest of you in terms of agreeing that, I don't see this as an intensification of the use of the property. It's it's a reallocation of existing space on the property and changing the programming within it. It's not increasing the square footage of the building. We're requiring them to maintain the same parking count. You know, one of the conditions was if they wanted to increase parking at the Puton Hill House, they had to take parking away from the main lot. So the net-net result is what we were trying to strike, which was a balance in allowing them to reorganize their administrative offices, whether they were in the barn or in the Puton Hill House or somewhere else on the property. They were still going to be on the property somewhere. And I don't see this as constituting an intensification of use on the property.
Is there any other commissioner that wishes to make a comment? If not, Pete, were you going to say something?
I just, yeah, very minor, and not to confuse any issues, Attorney Sutins made a reference to the legal meaning of the word intensification. And it's really not applicable here. That term is used in the context of non-conforming uses. There's a, you cannot expand a non-conforming use, but you can intensify a non-conforming use. The word intensification is used by the courts to distinguish a use, a non-conforming use, from an expansion of a non-conforming use. So, for example, the easiest way to describe it is to say that a business, a non-conforming business can can get busier, can grow, can become, you know, a busier business. That's not an illegal expansion of that non-conforming use. On the other hand, if that business wanted to build a second building, that would be an expansion of the non-conforming use. But that term intensification really means what you intended it to mean when you adopted this resolution. It doesn't necessarily mean what a court would say it means in the context of a non-conforming use. This is not a non-conforming use, special permit use. So it's, it really, it's your determination as to whether or not this activity is the type of intensification that the commission intended it to mean in 2017. That's all I had to say. I just wanted to make that clear.
John, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my comment I made earlier is really an example of what Attorney Gelderman just mentioned, is that you know, there's a natural ebb and flow in permitted activities. You may do more, you may do less. That's the nature of life, that things are move up and down sideways a little bit. Intensive abuse is something that's entirely new. The example I gave is a church opening, an actual grammar school or something like that, which is a whole different deal than having Sunday school or having religious services on a regular basis or counseling. I would see that in all, like perhaps as an intensive, tends to be a more intense use. But that, of course, not been discussed here, and I'm not opining that how I might rule on any suggestion in case someone actually makes an application to do that. But simply saying that there's a difference between an ebb and flow and natural shift in approved activities and a whole different type of activity. And here it strikes me as more of a natural ebb and flow and re-imagination of of approved activities, and that's where I'm coming out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if there's no other comment, I think what I would do at this time is I guess I would consider what I've heard so far from commissioners that we sort of have a consensus as to our understanding of the conditions. And perhaps leave it now up to Lynn and Attorney Gelderman to put that consensus into the language of an appropriate resolution that we can then have a commission vote on. I don't think we should take a vote tonight because we don't really have resolution language, and I'm not going to sit here and try to craft some language to vote on tonight.
Mr. Ward, could I just be heard on just one follow-up to Mr. Smith's response to Commissioner Bash?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Amy Sutins, for the record. Just fixing my video. I just wanted to highlight, and just going back to the, as I said, Commissioner Bash's question about, you know, the Justice Initiative and the administration. Again, I would highlight what the foundation told you it was going to do in that building. It told you it was going to be the operations and safety center. I'll direct you back. It's Exhibit fifty-three I. They told you what was going to be in that building and what they have done with that is inconsistent without your approval, inconsistent with that representation. So I would just again encourage you, and frankly, a number of the questions and comments about intensification all have involved physical changes to the building or additional uses. There is no question that if you made a physical expansion of this building, it would require a site plan application. And if you made, added a use like a school, that would require an amendment to the special permit as an additional use, because those are called out separately. So I would encourage you to think very strongly about intensification outside the context of something that would require a site plan application, because that's what the permit requires. And I think in thinking about physical changes to structures, your language, and if what you think is that your condition was unclear and that should be modified, you could do that. But I don't think that the condition is written. You know, you're reading, from what I hear, you know, you're reading the term, no intensification out of the permit by requiring it to be somehow related to physical changes to the structure, the physical expansion of the structure. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think with that, and I appreciate both outside counsel for providing good comments and keeping them reasonably short, so that we appreciate that. The commissioners will now have until our next meeting when there will be a resolution that you'll be able to look at and at that time to vote upon. So, Mr. Gelderman, do you have any other before we close this portion of our meeting?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I will call upon Chairman Goodwin to step back in.
Thank you, Chairman Ward. Chairman to chairman. Okay, item note, and thank you, Dick, again, and all the commissioners, very much appreciated. Thank you. Item number two, sixty-three Park Street, minor modification of existing special permit granted in August two thousand seventeen to allow for a home office without a residential element, which allowed for eight employees and lectures and exhibitions on average three years since nineteen seventy-three. Mr. Finn, who is counsel to the applicant, is here this evening. So he will be available. I'm not convinced we need him, but he is here if anyone has any questions for him. But what I wanted to do was start with Lynn. And Lynn, please take us through the history and the current situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a brief history of the project, sixty-two Park Street, as you all might know, is the house on the corner of Seminary and Park Street, the former Dick Bergman house. And on August twenty-ninth of two thousand seventeen, this commission granted a special permit to convert the residents on the lower levels from a home to a business use without having someone live in the building and to allow an increase in the number of employees. The special permit approval in two thousand seventeen was granted with four conditions. The first was that there shall be no expansion of onsite parking. The second was that there be only one dwelling unit permitted as the special permit was in effect. The third was that only one business tenant was permitted. And the fourth was that there was no expansion of the building or changes to the exterior of the building. We again revisited this matter in May of two thousand nineteen. It came back to the commission with a minor modification. The property had conveyed at the time, and there was a new owner who wanted to be certain that they could use the property in a similar fashion and that it would be a business use. It was noted at this meeting by counsel, by the counsel for the applicants at the time, which was Mr. Finn, that there would be minor modifications contemplated for the building and that those modifications were primarily primarily with respect to ADA accessibility. However, no plans were presented at the time indicating whether the changes would be exterior or interior. And at the time of the two thousand nineteen modification before this commission, the conditions of the two thousand seventeen approval were fixed to the approval. So they ran with it. And fast forward to current day, there's a building permit application that has been made that poses what would typically be administrative approvals on our, on our side that they posed to replace a window and a door to, and to create a small ramp to add an ADA parking space and to create better ADA accessibility. The ADA changes that are proposed this time are not the same that they were proposing last time, but they are both ADA changes. The technical details are almost moot. They're both ADA changes. Staff has reviewed the building permit. And while we recognize that they're minor changes, there is a condition that says that there can be no exterior changes. And if there are exterior changes, it needs to come back to the commission. And we recognize that, you know, the conditions may have been modified implicitly as there was discussion in 2019 with respect to possible ADA modifications. However, there was no explicit modification to the conditions. And since no plans were submitted in 2019 indicating what the specific changes were, whether they were interior, interior or exterior, it's hard to say that, that the changes were what was reviewed by the commission. In addition, the legal decision that we advertised the 2019 approval with, we did note that ADA accessibility was contemplated. And so at the end of the day, staff has brought this back to you guys to make sure that the changes to the door, which is a door that faces Seminary Street, so it is, it is viewed from the right of way, is, is okay. They're going to change a window as well. The Historic District, Historic District Commission will also be reviewing the exterior changes as the property is a historic property. So that is the reason why staff brought this application back to the commission.
Any questions for Lynn?
Do we see some drawings or what's being proposed?
Yeah, they're, they're on the website. Lynn, are you able to bring them up?
Yeah, I'll bring them right up. I'm sorry.
If anybody wants, you can also go to, it is on the P and Z website.
Sorry, I didn't have it open before. I'm sorry about that.
Lynn, Lynn, it's Kent. It's, it's okay. I can look at it on the website.
All right.
So all they're proposing to do is add the ADA compliant window facing seminary and then replace, sorry, ADA compliant door and then replace an existing window that faces park? Is that correct? I'm just going.
Yes. And they're also going to put signage up to indicate an ADA parking space on the site.
So Lynn, they're, they're converting a, a space from a regular space to an ADA space?
Yeah.
Okay.
None, none of the spaces are actually articulated, but they're, they're.
But they're not, the point is they're not adding spaces. They're just.
Yes.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Chris. One of the issues I know we discussed, as, as a member of this application is that it's a very prominent corner and it's a very notable building with a long history in town. It had gone through a number of different uses. I think it was a school originally and various other things. But that, as I remember, is the sense of the commission that the envelope, which includes the landscaping, gardening and, and so forth, would remain, remain intact. And so if there is a conversion of a regular parking space to make it ADA compliant, I would, I would just want to ensure that those, those concepts are retained. And then in order to, and so that in order to create the ADA compliant space, it doesn't really have to dig into the garden, which I think is really part of, a very important part of the house. Because I know the previous owner was frankly very diligent and very successful at putting together a really, a lovely, a lovely garden around the, the building, which I think really helps, is really a part and parcel of the structure itself. Thank you.
I maybe, can I comment on that briefly?
Sure.
Yes, so you may not recall.
I'm sorry, is that, is that Mr. Finn?
It is, Mr. Chairman Goodwin.
Oh, I thought it was someone else. I really did. I'm not, but don't take that the wrong way. Kindly joking around a bit. Kindly state your name, Mr. Finn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Attorney Steve Finn from Wosse Rosen on behalf of the owner of the property at 63 Park Street. When we were, I appeared before you in 2019 when we presented the plans for this property to the commission. I was, did not represent Mr. Bergman in 2017 when he got the modder, the small modification to a special permit. But in, in 2019, you may recall, I mentioned to you that David Peterson bought the property from Mr. Bergman in 2018 through an LLC. And I think it bear, and to Mr. Chris's point, I think it bears repeating that, that Mr. Peterson is the founder of the Onira Foundation, whose mission is to increase public awareness of historic preservation and America's significant architecture. His mission also involves financial support for these goals. And in addition, he's, he's got the credentials because Mr. Peterson holds a master's degree in historic preservation from Columbia's University's Graduate School of Architecture, Planning and Preservation. So his whole goal here is to preserve this property and its gardens. In 2017, it turned out that when Mr. Bergman changed the use, that actually required ADA compliance, but that never occurred. And now it's, the issue's been, has arisen. And it's arisen primarily because Mr. Peterson wants to open up this beautiful public residence so other people can enjoy the interior, the exterior and the gardens. And in order to do that, he needs to be ADA compliant. The parking space that's going to be created is in the existing parking lot. No expansion of the parking lot, no taking down of any trees or any bushes or any beautiful landscaping. So I'll, I'll be done in just a minute, Mr. Chairman. I think the issue is for this commission is in some respects somewhat similar to the issue you just had with Grace. What was the intention of the conditions that you placed in 2017? Were they really meant to preclude someone from being able, becoming ADA compliant on such, with such minor changes? And I think the answer to that is no, that was not your intent. I may also point out to you that the resolution that you approved in 2019, as Lynn correctly pointed out, did say the new owner wants to continue this use at this site and may make some minor alterations with respect to ADA accessibility. I think ADA accessibility in this context means, means exterior changes. So I really do think this was contemplated back in 2019. I may have further comment depending on if there are other questions from commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Any other questions for Mr. Finn?
Yes, it's Kent Turner. I have a question for Mr. Finn. Is the parking, the new handicap, and I guess it's a van space, is it on grade with the entry so that there's no ramp? There's no transition as such that requires any handrails or any other impact to the existing building? So, Mr. Turner, my understanding is, is that there's a slight, very slight grade differential between where the door will, will come down to and the parking space. There will be a small little ramp there. We know that, I think it's been run by Brian Platt, who I think is sort of the czar of the ADA compliance here in New Canaan. And I think he's okay with it. But Mr. Peterson and I think Mr. Karp has been involved in this work are also on the Zoom meeting tonight and they may have more specific information for you. Okay, so my question remains, will the, will there be handrails and?
So Mr. 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 Turner, do you want to? I guess, Mr. Finn, you're suggesting the best way to answer Mr. Turner's question is bringing in Mr. Mr. Karp?
Mr. Karp or Mr. Peterson?
Okay. Somebody's.
I'm here.
Lynn, can we, can we bring in Mr. Karp or Mr. Peterson? If you can wave, raise your hand, please.
Yeah, I'm just gonna need to stop sharing to do that. So just wait, bear with me.
Okay.
Mr. Karp can actually speak. He's unmuted right now.
Mr. Karp?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so the existing grade is within probably an inch of what we need for the handicap accessibility. So we will be able to just add a little bit more gravel to the driveway and require no rail or anything else in order to get access.
Okay.
To the building. Just by pure.
Okay, I think we're losing Mr. Karp there. But Mr. Turner, was that, was that good enough?
That's, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so now we have Mr. Karp and Mr. Finn. Commissioners, any other questions for either of them?
This is John Chris. The window and door, will they be consistent with the character and envelope of the building as far as architectural details, as far as quality materials and forth? Thank you.
Mr. Finn, if you can address that question because I think Mr. Karp's audio isn't very good.
Yes, my understanding, again, in keeping with Mr. Peterson's mission of, of, of keeping these buildings as, as historically accurate as possible, the answer to that question is yes.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, everybody good? Okay, super. Thank you, Mr. Karp. Thank you, Mr. Finn.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, commissioners, can I have a motion for approval or denial of 63 Park Street?
John, Chris, I will be approved.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Chris?
I see the changes being requested as relatively minor. The overall envelope and look of the building, including its gardens, could be maintained. The physical changes again are relatively minor and the new installation of a door and window are represented to be a very high quality and architecturally consistent with the rest of the building. Also, the ADA compliance is something that this commission has already opined on. And so it seems this is really the implementation of something the commission has already opined on. And this seems to be about the, the easiest way to implement that as maybe reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Kent Turner.
I saw Mr. Turner. Okay.
A second. John, if I could just add. The proposal is in keeping with the village guidelines, the design guidelines. And it is a minor alteration to a very important historic building in New Canaan. And whatever we can do to help make this building real and allow people in the public to be able to visit it, we should be behind it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It's Lynn. Does the commission want to retain the four conditions or do you want to dispose of them then?
Well, what, what, what I was thinking of doing was taking a vote and then sort of taking a straw poll of, I mean, that's, it could be a longer discussion unless, who made the motion? Mr. Chris did? Mr. Chris, do you want to consider, can we amend the permit? Mr. Chris, do you want to consider that? I mean, the, the other thing I was considering doing was just taking a vote and then just having a discussion of, you know, sort of a straw poll of how detailed we want to be on these conditions. So what occurred here is that you heard Mr. Finn's argument. Lynn and I discussed Mr. Finn's argument that he made to Lynn. And ultimately, we made the decision, sort of call it better safe than sorry to take it to you, the commissioners, because the conditions do say any changes to the interior, as well as the other things that Lynn outlined, have to come back to the commission. What we could have done was, we could have said, you know, look, and this was Mr. Finn's argument, that it pretty much meets the spirit of the application and we don't have to be as hard, you know, in our, in our control of this. But ultimately, we decided to bring it to you. So, Mr. Chris, would, would you like to consider dropping the conditions or retain the conditions and just go ahead with the mo, the motion as suggested?
But Ms. Avani, just repeat all four conditions just to be sure the commission is fully cognizant of what they are again?
All right, the four conditions are as follows. The first was that there shall be no expansion of onsite parking. The second was that only one dwelling unit is permitted as long as the special permit is in effect. The third was that only one business tenant is permitted. And the fourth is that there's no expansion of the building or changes to the exterior of the building.
Well, the, the first three, I certainly, I would like to retain. The last one, we are making some changes to it. It was what we're discussing right now. And so my own view is like to keep all four with perhaps number four being, I'm not sure altered is quite the right term, but would encompass the decisions we may be making tonight if we, if the commission, its wisdom decides to approve this application. Because I think, as, as Mr. Turner suggested, this is a very, and as I suggested too, it's a very important building. It's a very prominent corner. It's an historic building. I think it's a very lovely building with the gardens and so forth. And, and, and in keeping that, I, I think is something we should endeavor to do. So that's my, my view on this.
Okay, and then, and, you know, just to add to that, when Lynn and I discussed why we should bring this back to you, it was really not so much the parking issue, but it was the changes to the exterior. You know, the, the condition of approval says if they're changing the exterior, they got to come back to us. And so we said, we got to be better safe than sorry and bring it back to you.
Yeah. The parking seemed to be a moot point given the very minor things that are.
Exactly, yeah.
But the, the exterior, I mean, they're putting a door in. That's, that's not necessarily a trivial thing. So my preference would be to maintain all four with the, the changes that we may be making, authorizing tonight being encompassed within, within the building and that if they want to do anything else, they may have to come, they would have to come back to this commission for approval. That'd be my view.
Okay. Kent, you seconded this, right? Are you comfortable with that interpretation?
I do. I agree with Commissioner Chris.
Okay, great. Okay, so I call the question. John, Goodwin, I vote yes. Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Scornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Good, yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, super. Everybody, thank you for making, carving out additional time tonight. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody stay safe. Bye bye.
Thank you.